Call the November seventh, twenty twenty four Prairie Grove Planning Commission meeting to order. Um, need to make an amendment to the agenda to I add item three, which will be a conditional use. From a request uh to operate a multi or place a multifamily in a B two mixed use zone. We'll just add that to number three.
And then the agenda you all have in front of you, you'll notice that there's one on the board of adjustments. Uh, that was the first agenda I did, and then I amended it. Unfortunately, when I ran copies of any of the first ones, I think so. Uh, if you remember right, the one that I emailed, you had a board of adjustments, number two on it.
And item one, the approval of minutes from the October tenth meeting, there's one correction needs to be made or an addition on uh. The first item that we worked that we did uh was the. Tabled item for the paving requirements. It should say a motion was made by Rob Schutzer to deny. The request. You just need to add the words to deny.
Make motion approve.
Thank you.
Have a motion, the second to approve is amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Alright. Concept plan and conditional use request for multifamily construction in a neighborhood mixed use zone on South Mock Street.
Is everybody familiar with where this is located? South Mock Street, straight across from the planning factory uh. To the north is the Fiddler Apartment Complex, which takes up the rest of the block. And then to the east is multifamily duplexes and apartments. Uh, to the south is the Old Mill. And then across the street, of course, is uh commercial. And they're represented tonight. If you want to kind of explain um what we're doing here, I would say going into this, that. There has been some discussion internally with staff, and I think J C's been involved in that discussion as well. Whether or not this driveway would be private or public. And I talked to Public Works today, and they're okay with it either way. Uh, the difference would be if it's a private drive, you wouldn't be able to place any utilities within that unless they were in dedicated easements. So uh water meters would probably be at the street as opposed to in front of each unit. And I know we're talking about uh. Uh townhouses here. So there probably is some advantages to it being public, but uh we'll let the planning commission discuss what those options are. The other thing is if it's. Private development, I know from the trash truck standpoint, uh they won't run trash trucks into a private development. The dumpster would have to be out towards the road where they can get access to it, so. So there's pros and cons, I'm sure.
Very good. Uh, I'm Jay, I'm with Development Consultants. Uh, we're the uh engineering firm that is assisting Mr. Girl with this development. Um, the two items that we have uh for today, one is a conditional use um to do multifamily on this property. We are exploring options on this. Uh, the option that we actually wanted to forward with is townhomes uh on individually owned parcels. Uh, but kind of depending on how things go, you know, apartment or or you know triplex, multiplex style. Apartment would also be something. So that's the the conditional use that application is in before you today. Um, we also have a concept review. And so would you guys like to do one before we do the other, or just have me speak about both?
Uh, go ahead and speak on the concept part.
Okay. So with this, you know, we're showing there'd be seventeen townhomes. Uh, these would be townhouses where they would share a common wall. The wa- the lot line would go down the center of the walls for these, and then each of these would be a separate lot of a subdivision that would be sold to individuals. Um, and then they would uh, you know, share that one common wall except for the outside external units. We are showing this to be a twenty foot alley. Uh, and the the item for discussion with y'all is whether that is a twenty foot private alley, or if that is a twenty foot public alley. And the difference there between whether uh if it's private, of course, we would maintain it. If it was public, then we would build it, and then it would be dedicated to the public. Um, if it is private, our intent is to make it a private alley and also a dedicated utility easement. So that we could have uh utilities within that. Um, and then uh some additional space just outside of it would probably also include some utility easement. And we would be working with the trash service and and uh utilities. Uh, we'd also make sure that it was uh. Uh, safe and available for fire truck uh to be able to to come in and and make a turning movement to get from one street through to the next street. Um, in either case, whether it's public or private. Um, as we read the code, uh, we weren't certain whether it could be a public. Alley, and so that's why we presented it as a private, but we want to learn more about what code allows for that. Besides uh those items, you know, where you would uh meet the regular requirements for this zone, the N H M zone. Uh, for setbacks and bill two lines. Um, so we wouldn't be asking for any other type of variance. Uh, one thing I've been there every day, we are showing nine units on one block of our townhomes. In your code, it does stipulate it's up to a maximum of eight. So when it comes through as large scale development, that may be a request we ask as a variance is to add an additional unit. Um, but that wouldn't be handled tonight, that would be then. And if it looked like that that would not be the case, we could separate that ninth unit into a single family detached. Structure and just do an eightplex uh of the townhomes. With that, uh, I'm available if you have any questions and you have any.
So confirming there'll be two story townhomes, correct, or?
Probably two stories. So we would like to have a garage. Um, so the thought is probably garage on the bottom floor, maybe some living in upstairs. So you have two story likely.
And they they would not be through. Yeah, so they would be limited to two stories. And we 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 plan to have the unit setback at the twenty foot bill two line. Um, so that we have enough driveway with that we could park vehicles in the driveways. So they'll have a they'll have a garage. They'll also have a driveway area that is big enough for people to park in.
Driveway wide enough for two more cars.
Yes. Yeah. So they'd have two vehicles in the garage, two vehicles in the driveway, so you could have four vehicles.
So that that actually exceeds the apartment, so.
That 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 helps with, you know, sometimes we get involved in these and neighbors are worried about overflow and where's people gonna park? There's there's gonna be plenty of parking here.
They feed on the private alley, do they feed onto the street there on s- the commercial?
The private alley. These would be accessed. Uh, all the garages would face the front of that or public alley as well.
But then that alley, yeah, it looks would look like it would access off either commercial or mock.
All about buildings would face each other on both sides.
I guess I would probably rely on staff's kind of recommendations or, I mean, the. I see the pros and cons of it being a public alley and a private alley. I mean, if it's public, then obviously city's gonna maintain it at some point in life. If it's a private, you know, what's it gonna look like in twenty years and who's gonna maintain it?
Yeah, there'd have to be a P O A and an agreement for that to be maintained by them. And the the interesting thing would be how how we have to work the utilities between.
Is it public alley? Larry, I mean, if it's public, is it gonna change any?
I think.
Requirements on it as far as.
Talking to Chuck today, I think he kind of leaned. He was good either way, but I think he leaned towards making it public. Um. You probably know some of the problems we've had with the development on South Mock Street if it's private. And we can't control it being blocked. Uh, trucks need to get back there to utilities, or uh we've. I know we've had big issues getting trash trucks back there to their dumpster because it's a private development, and Chuck has just got to the point where he said we will not pick up anymore. On the private street because we can't even get there. So if it's public, we can control it. If it's private, we can't.
And the condition of it, I can see that, you know, two ways are great.
On the front end.
Yeah, they're great.
If this was an apartment complex, I would say probably not, but these are gonna be, you know.
Owners.
Owner owned owned homes.
Which could also be investor homes.
Yeah.
Rather than just, okay, so I mean, then you're going back to the, it's a dollar deal, not a, I want it to look good because I live here, don't. Not saying it will be, saying it can be.
Yeah.
And besides, like you said, is is multi-use homes, right, or multifamily home on both sides?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's surrounded by duplexes.
Duplex.
It just happened to fall in our. Mixed use.
In in the new zoning, um, most zones require conditional use on apartments in most of our new zones. They're allowed, but by conditional approval.
If I may, in in this, it 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 may be a terminology thing. We weren't intending for these to be apartments. We were getting for these to be townhouses.
Right.
I I see a difference difference between the two. In some communities, they just put them together as multifamily houses. So it's just a viewpoint thing.
And also I would say, and I think there's been some uh questions from the engineer side things too. Um. Army street standards don't really have a standard for alleys. So we've allowed alleys, and uh there just isn't any defined standard for those alleys. So that's something we want to look at. I think Public Works needs to sign out on the sign off on the design. I don't think we have an issue with the whip. But uh we'll need to see a copy of the design and they'll need to sign off on it.
Would a twenty foot, maybe enough for your trucks to get back to?
Yes, twenty foot. It's just, I mean, they'd have to be constructed to hold, you know, eighty thousand pounds.
Yeah, I got you.
Nobody's gonna be using this as a through street, obviously, because commercial could interrupt that, but.
I I think we we're showing that one internal radius that we have twenty. We probably have to modify that to be a twenty eight to actually make it uh for fire truck, but. That we we intend to uh make it for truck accessible.
But there wouldn't be any parking on the alley, right?
No, the parking would be just within the driveway. It'd be in evidence, it it will hopefully a nice out, but a a true out for accessing utility entry.
But it's also the front door, right? Or would the front door be on Commercial Street? I mean.
Is this a parking in the rear type unit?
So it could, I mean, looking at that back building, you couldn't really have a front doors on that, you know, definitely going there. So there'll likely be. So say your alley acts like a front door and garage.
Yeah.
So it's not just entrance for the homeowners, like kind of like the alleys on like rubble, because this is where we always go to. They have an alley. But that alley is away from the front doors.
That's the back entrance.
That's the back entrance. So it's typically just a homeowner. This will be both.
Yeah. As I, it it'll be a nice alley.
Yeah. But I can see a car not staying in a driveway, but if you had a company, I can see a car very easily being like, well, you guys are all parked there. I was stopping this alley. Now that's that's a one time occasion, maybe it's an occasional occasion, but if you're talking fire truck access, I can see you having the issue there at some point.
I I would envision that we would put a red stripe on both sides of this. Um, whether people honor that or not. It it would be intended to be my fault.
Yeah.
But to clarify, just the townhomes along Commercial Street, I mean, they are gonna access off of the alley. They're not gonna access off Commercial Street.
That's correct.
I I was gonna bring that up as well, but um, concept like of the town, how they're facing each other, that means your corner property, your commercial situation. When you you're looking at the back of the buildings, is that what, because I'm trying to think of a apartment complex, the way you drive up and you see the back of the building. Just thinking about how, I mean, I know why you're not doing it because you're trying to shed it out, but am I correct on on the way I'm hearing it?
At this moment, I have, we don't have footprints or concepts or anything, so we're 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 looking at more of the planometric layout of it. So do you have a concept?
Mr. Girl, I would assume probably you'd be building some type of big privacy.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. On sixty two, like some of it has the privacy fence all along, basically, so that that's probably what would be the case there. I mean, it doesn't make much sense to have the house spacing Commercial Street, you know, I think it'd be more problematic than than good, so. Uh, I envision it probably Commercial Street being like a quote unquote backyard. Um, and then have a privacy business, trying to give it a privacy. Again, I mean, we want it to be nice.
And and that would be similar to many of our something, just like Mount Home, the back of the house is face Butler, but there's privacy fence there.
The nice thing about it is you don't have cars coming and going on Commercial Street.
Probably the in and out of streets never good.
Right, yes, that's where.
Got a single entry off of Commercial, a single entry off of lock to channel all the vehicles off of that road.
Yeah, that was my wanted clarification on that, for sure.
But aesthetically, from the roadside, it it would not be as aesthetically, but we, that is very common.
Yeah.
So.
And if questions are. Yeah. And again, we're just talking the concept right now, Rick.
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the audience have any questions, comments concerning this proposed development?
Anybody have a question about access for school buses very much?
They said they put a covered school bus stop right there for the forty kids that are gonna come crawling. Okay, so now I guess moving to your conditional use request.
Yes, sir. Uh, so again, conditional use request is to allow multifamily apartments on this property. Um. One item is whether that is determined to also be the same as a townhome, so we would need a conditional use to be able to do this. The other side of that is if you consider townhomes to be single family attached and separate from apartments, then. If we get granted the the conditional use permit, in that case, we would be looking at that as an alternate, instead of it being separately owned parcels, maybe be.
Single one complex.
And one complex with apartments. Um, but our our intent as of right now is that these are gonna be separately owned lots uh and townhouses. I think I think we applied for the conditional use and more out of an abundance of talking to make sure we're covered either way. Depending on the definition in in Prairie Grove, whether it's multi-use or multifamily use, or is it a single family use?
And I think part of it was just me not understanding what your uh goal was here. I thought these were gonna be single owned. Units, but I found out today that they weren't, so.
When we look through the code, we noticed that in the residential codes, it spells it out very clear.
Yeah.
But in the non-residential codes, there's a gap. It 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 really doesn't address. Um, I looked at it when I first looked at it, I thought we don't need a conditional use because these are single family attached homes. And if it's a single family home, you look at single family and it says permitted. Um, but there's a different category for multifamily. And so it's it's in some communities, they say it's multifamily, and some they say it's a single family attached, so we wanted to make sure we're covered either way.
Questions about conditional use or?
No.
I mean, I. I think I like the idea that they're gonna be individually owned versus a unit, but that's just mine.
I agree with that.
Those in your opinion, if it's if they are individually owned, will it require C U P?
I I think it's a little bit gray in our own code. I think the best thing to do is go ahead and uh do the conditional use, that way they're covered either way. And again, I think you look at the neighborhood, and I think.
It's. Yeah, it it I it no question, it fits, it fits the demographic area.
Make motion we approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for multifamily in a uh neighborhood mixed use. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get back.
Now, I think to clarify, I think um. If you're, if you're wanting an answer on the alley, I mean, I think that would kind of lead that back at staff and and I think I would rather see it be. Um, public alley.
Absolutely, yeah. That was kind of the indication.
That's, you know, preference of the city as well.
I'll have another discussion with them next week about it and give you some clearer guidance, but I think that's part of the direction we're taking.
We'll work with Larry and Chuck, and uh as we get ready to move forward with this, I believe our next step will be to bring it forward as a preliminary flat. And then if that's public alley, it'll be part of the preliminary flat, infrastructure improvements, if you'll answer.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you all, appreciate you.
Alright, uh, and our added item uh. Is a conditional use permit request for multifamily in B two mixed use uh on Heritage Parkway and Butler.
Everybody familiar with where this property is, first of all, it it's at the corner of Butler, inherited Parkway, um. If you look in the distance, that's the new storage buildings that they built on Butler recently. Uh, Mountain View subdivision would be over there, Seal and Meadows subdivisions here behind these storage buildings. So it's looking from Heritage Parkway, it's right at the corner of Butler. And that's the original concept that you submitted. Is that still kind of what we're looking at, that original concept?
Yes.
Alright, so this this is B two mixed use. So it's very similar. Apartments are allowed, but by conditional approval. So um, I think the plan. Is to build commercial along the highway frontage, correct? Leaving a lot on the corner for future developments.
Future commercials.
Future commercial. So we'd have commercial here, commercial here with apartments behind these three commercial properties. And the man that can answer any question that you have is standing up.
At least related to this development. Uh, I'll take a guess at other ones. Um, I guess Blake Murray with Craft Control. We're proposing sixty apartment units uh through the C U P process, a flex space, which is that north uh north, sorry, north is to the left. Um, so the uh northwestern, northeastern most buildings is a flex space, that's the year. Bill, yeah, that helps. We're just, we're uh we're there to point. And then the other one is a dealership. I don't really think either of those are really. Are part of the request, because they're only allowed by.
They're allowed by rights.
Just in general, just explaining, because, you know, ideally, we'll be bringing this for y'all, hopefully, as long as everything goes good tonight. And then. The commercial outlaw uh there along Butler Road is about an acre full over one point oh seven.
So you could put, yeah, I mean, there's many things you could put on an acre lot. You can put convenience stores, uh, you know, there's multiple things they can build there.
And uh sixty apartment units that are on the bottom of your screen. Um, overall, we're showing a hundred and thirty eight total apartment spaces right now. And I don't know how much we get into large scale related items right now.
We don't need to, but I mean, you can address anything you want, so.
Right, so that's that's what we're asking for tonight, is is a mixed use between uh multifamily and uh the commercial within the city. Have any extra questions?
Sixty apartment units in what form, what uh configuration are you looking at?
They're three story uh apartment units.
And three story opens up a hole and do uh can of worms as far as fire code.
It does.
You're aware.
Yes. And that's something we probably want to coordinate is, you know, this thing progresses. Because you're the head, right, partner?
Uh, that's, yes, some.
You're the man. Yeah, okay. That, where that ends there on the south side, there were not inside next to the pond, where it says double dumpster. That is a uh per appendix D, so that's a hundred and fifty foot hammerhead turnaround. I think everything meets fire code in terms of that, uh whether, you know, all these need to be sprinkled or not, we need to dive into the code.
I I don't remember if this one was prior to us discussing needing some extra parking or not, but we.
Yes.
We talked about adding some extra parking, but maybe moving this pond around and looking at expand that if I remember.
Right, and and some of this stuff, you know, once.
But we'll do it with that large scale.
Yeah, once we dive into the drainage design, this ditch here in the core underneath the highway, we'll know a lot more as to how much. How much can be developed that way. We're being conservative right now with with speed shut.
Did we do anything in the in the code or the the zoning to indicate the density of the apartment complex versus the?
Think of density requirements that are in the code.
There is requirement of the.
There is. And don't ask me to quote it off the top of my head. I I did look at it, it needs the density requirements.
We talked about this before on uh. Like the Johnson thing, like what they had up in Johnson, we kind of talked like if we were gonna put something in that area that had a uniqueness. How you could stay and shop all in the same area, coffee or whatever, but also we talked that there might be like some green space area. In in a type of zone like that with mixed, is there anything green space wise other than the drainage here? I see a lot of green on there, but I can't tell. And I don't know that exact acreage. I know I had that written down at one point where it was. I mean, it's a sizable portion mainly because of that drainage drainage way. Uh, we do have the offsets per code shown. Um, actually more than, I think we have a twenty foot offset there on the bottom of the screen.
Do you remember what the total acre to the parcel was? Was it thirteen?
Five, five, one, six, nine.
Oh, it's smaller.
But that's uh in the green space. We don't count drainage area, do we?
You mean as far as our park performance?
Yeah, I mean, like in in most of the time when we're doing any kind of subdivision or whatever, there's gotta be some type of green space.
Yeah, our code's actually changed somewhat. It's become more monitored and it has been uh dedicated to green space. They changed it at the beginning of the year. Uh, they can't offer green space in lieu of paying the fees. Uh, but it has to be usable land, like you said. It can't be a drainage area. It can't be. For park space that we need and.
Trying to just think, you know, you got apartment complexes with kids, possibly, probably. Where they go when here, you know? Like neighborhood wise, I'm just thinking, you got all that commercial there right beside it. And you got a busy road right beside it where it should be, but with kids right beside it now. I'm thinking like Betty Jo Corner, crazy, you know, like.
Sure.
How does that, how does that look or play out? Because we're just looking at this, this is not really like enough to really see the picture that you have, so.
Right.
Um, like I said, we're not full full design. Uh, that's that's stuff we could certainly address with large scale. There's there's twenty to thirty feet there on the bottom of the screen between the building and the property line. There's twenty to thirty feet in that middle area. Um, sorry, I was trying to try and describe this. Like this area here, I mean, I live in a subdivision where the lot goes like this, and yeah, when I'm outside with my kid, you know, kicking a soccer ball, if he misses it, it's just, it's gonna roll forever, so. Uh, at least this is relatively flat. Again, it's only twenty to thirty feet here and here, but it is usable space. The space over here is also, you know, it's not pond there, it's it's indirectly something people could use, but that's more the commercial area, so. Uh, I'm hopeful we can flatten some of the stuff out and uh maybe this pond gets smaller. We can have more green space over here when we actually get into the plan design. Uh, some of the stuff when you're doing C U P, a little harder conceptually uh on the front end to know, get a find to everything. And then what is that, what's in the middle right there? Can I green with two? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, this is a lift station, so uh water water comes across Butler here, and will come down through here and probably terminate somewhere in here through. Sewer will pump up, come on Butler Road, try to find a gravity location where we can, um, I think we talked about hooking that.
There's a manhole there somewhere, Chuck said.
Right, and that goes to uh the Mountain View Estates where Seal and Meadows just died in. And then separation between commercial and multifamily here, is there a separation? Do we need a separation? Is that something that? You know, like some of them don't, and it's fine, but like we put a Taco Bell right there in a housing addition, and we said, better have some police.
Yeah, we put a fence.
Okay, that's not much separation, but.
No, but it helped drastically.
So it's like, do we have an expectation there?
And then, and also remember that you're approving this too. So it's like Taco Bell is a commercial property next to the well, you know. You're you've given them the concept of you're approving, you're giving them a lot of that, and so. And and let me just say this while while I'm speaking, we only have so much commercial property. And we only have so many corner lots and commercial property. And so when we, when I look at this, and I'm gonna tell you that, well, I'll leave my hand in that. But it's, you know, you're giving up fifty percent of the commercial property to all the complexes, so that's something we have to think about in that. When we have so much commercial property, it brings in tax relief to the.
Well, that was, you know, the mixed use we talked about is is kind of unique in certain places. And so like we're talking Johnson, Johnson's unique in some of their layout. Where is the uh right across from Buffalo Wild Wings, there's a fatal, there's some uniqueness there. You can go downstairs and have a a beer and a pizza and then go back upstairs. You don't even have to drive. What is the uniqueness factor here? What is the benefit here? You know, are these apartments something that's attractive to the people in our town to be right beside all that? Like, that's what I'm struggling with. Is how does that interact? I mean, there's a thousand homes going in on that road. If I was a business, I would love to be on that road with a thousand homes with people driving by. And then you also have the storage units and then now some apartments. I don't know.
I can't comment on the uniqueness because I. I can't comment on the uniqueness because I, I can see as much as you can.
Yeah.
But as far as the uh, preparation, commercial residential, we do have some screening requirements. It can be vegetative. So I mean, it could be a row of uh, high density evergreens, or it could be something else besides the pants, but uh. There is a requirement that they separated somehow.
Typically, you know, apartments is a good step down from commercial. I know we have apartment, or sorry, we have storage units on the other side. But we are right immediately after that down to single family, what seventy foot lots? So I mean, if the uh. Right, I mean, if, if the storage units weren't there, I mean, and we were just looking at Salem Meadows right there, I mean, this would be to me an immediate step down from your. Commercial to apartments to your single family, which is typical planning um type stuff you look to see. I mean. It'd be weird if we put the apartments like next to the highway and then had commercial, for example, that, that would be a hassle, but. That was kind of the thought process that went into this was the step down between that and that. And you know, we are getting what, over two acres of commercial. Well, almost two and a half acres of commercial here. So I mean, we are keeping at least fifty percent of the commercial. But also recognize it is expensive to develop right now and, and they're trying to offset some of that by something they know they can day one, you know. Get some return on investment, so. And hopefully the commercial piece upfront, I mean, that's a fantastic piece. I don't know who, who would not want to buy that. That seems fucking open.
But if it, excuse me, if it were to be approved. The, the uh, corner lot, I mean, that you're showing is future, whereas I mean, it, it is. Definitely would be dedicated to commercial or not, you couldn't come back and say.
And, and how, you can actually see the red lines here, and I guess I could explain that. And this is not part of the CUP, it's just explaining, so uh, we'd be splitting it into four lots, so um, three of them would be guaranteed to be commercial. You know, the other one is what the CUP is for on the bottom of the screen, so.
Okay, I follow.
No, it's not just one property under the owns, you know, thing, somebody can buy that.
If you, if you chose to give a conditional preferable, you could, you could uh. Definitely just do it for that single.
And with the apartments. It does go to the assessed value and money for like the school. But it doesn't provide dollars to the city, correct?
No tax or no sales tax.
No sales tax revenue. On two and a half acres of prime real estate.
We do get the property tax revenue as well. City collects property tax as well.
School gets the king's ransom, although they can leave a proportion, but.
And not that it's all this money. I mean, my first thought was mainly the fill of that road with a thousand houses. And now, and storage units and apartments and commercial. And could we house more commercial there? Like, what, what are we? What are we pushing away? When you don't have this space, like what are there certain businesses that say, you know, we need this many acres? We need this much offset from the road. We need this kind of depth if you want us on your commercial property. But then I also love, like when we pull off the Johnson, it does have a cool field right there where the clinic is and all that. You know, but Ruppel has a cool field. You know, very similar. I'm trying to think of just some of the different, the downtown walkability in Springville has a cool feel. Like there's all these different areas with cool fields. You know, what is the uniqueness of that? Like what does it add to the, the city? And if it's apartment complex. I don't know if that's, if that's where I want to say, hey, that's what we approve for you, you know, and have.
Where that's located, I don't see the necessarily appeal to either.
And you did talk about the step down from typically it's commercial apartments, single family. With the. Out, I would say out of place storage units there. Then that does kind of ruin that fill. It would seem more commercial industrial storage. And then it would seem like apartments and that, so it is a little bit awkward in the, the phasing of that, but that's what we have there.
Also, we are showing access drainage and utility even across that to future utility or a future commercial to the south. And there is that commercial all the way around the uh, the curve there as well. So I mean, while this is a, a good location, I mean, there's a lot of commercial included east southwest that's available. Five acres is a lot of commercial to, to buy off, but one time, I'm not saying somebody might not come in and do it, but uh, it is a paramount.
Of course, you're running some of those situations where a big box store, I mean, they want, you know, they need that much space to make everything work.
And do we want big bucks?
Right.
The other thing, because you gotta go back, yeah, the tax dollars sound good. But you could have an empty big bucks s- situation too. And then it's not as enjoyable, it's not as appealing.
Well, I think.
Insurance is moving there.
I think our town's hurting for the big bucks, so I think right now that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I just, because I want to talk thinking about my county that would do with this finances. Financially according to the decision making process. If the reality of it is, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is unless we add that small land. We only have so much land in Prairie Grove. And that land is designated for residential or commercial or mixed use and. You just have to kind of decide, it's your job as a planning commission to decide. When you know, when we, when we have conditional uses of our entrances or different sort of, what people actually need to do is change what, what has already been decided for that property. When you change that, well, that you just shorten that list of property that you have. For commercial to come in and if it was the opposite, you put commercial and residential, then you shorten that man there uh, a residential growth as well. That's all I'm saying. We, our residential growth in the, in the city of Prairie Grove has been wonderful over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. But we haven't seen as much commercial growth, even though we're walking towards that, you only have so much property for commercial growth. And, and you made a great point. Some of them need this much property, some of them need, some of them need one acre and some of them need ten acres. And, and so when, when people do come in and talk to myself and. Just all region, John, like they go, hey, I'm looking for a five acre lot, but you have, and we, we can only point out, you know, a handful of them. And so, once, once you give that one of those away to someone else, then once again, that less short. So it's, it's not just a, the financial aspect of the, the difference of, of those, oh. Excuse me, although it's an important factor, you only have so much property. You only have so much money in the pot necessarily. And once you take, you take it out, there's, there's no more in the pot, if that makes sense.
And big boxes, looking here, they're looking for residential numbers. So they may not be here anyways for a while until the rooftops get here. This would be another option to get, if that was your goal. I don't know if that's always my goal, it's, it's, I'm torn. I'm more the, I would want the fill and functionality of it. More than just a big box. I care less about big box. I would, I would prefer the, like if somebody drives to the towns. It's not the attitude of like, oh, that was. Industrial, right? As you go through the mainstream town, bowl used to be that way. You drive today and it's like, yeah, if you own an industrial equipment business, you have a spot on Lowell's main drag. It's changing now. They're, they're changing a little bit. So especially that intersection there. With the bypass, but I don't know.
Maybe I have a bunch of apartments you're living.
Everybody wants multifamily. I mean, at the moment, it's, it's a lot of a townhouse multifamily, but like the one guy couldn't. He, he said the density never would work and so it didn't go through. So a lot of it is the financial side of it. They don't want to, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, they don't want to do it because the financial side doesn't work.
Right.
So they want a higher density, always a higher density, sure. It's good and bad. Like I said, I've got young kids that. They can't afford not high density, right? So that's why we, they live in Farmington and Fayetteville and Springdale, you know, they can't, can't afford Prairie Grove. Because they're not that high density niche for them to buy, sure. Uh, but at the same time. You also, who else will be living there? I don't know.
But not all my kids are great. To, to the mayor's point, I mean, yes, you only have so much finite commercial land, but also you typically see your multifamily close to highways, close to. Roads have been planned to handle the traffic associated with it, so. And that's kind of why we were pitching this. I felt like it was a good middle ground of, hey, here's. You know, two, two and a half acres of commercial and then here's also some multifamily, which is what you'd see.
And Dicky's in mine too. Uh, this came out a while ago, I'm. Not sure I was even thinking about it, but we have adopted some uh, commercial design standards for multifamily. It's part of our code.
So they'll have to be born for that.
We did adopt those new design standards for multifamily. Still have to be here too.
Y'all are quite on this side of the table.
Yeah, man, I'm not sure we can give up the, 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 our commercial property. I mean, whenever we went through that. Period of resigning in Arizona and for keep all this. Commercial for tax dollars, because we've got tons of houses going, tons. The rooftops are coming. My business is going to come. You want to need somewhere to go. So I don't know my opinion if we can get here as a commercial.
I like it being used for commercial, some of it, but I struggle with the apartments behind it, you know, like it's. It's a big chunk going away, like you said, a big box store come in. They only make so much land, you know? You had to give it up.
Well, again, the thing that I'm looking at is. If we have the land for a big box store, I know people are like, yeah, it'd be possible, but that doesn't just necessarily bring sales revenue, but it brings. Increased jobs for our people to stay here in town. We also get the tax back, leaving those jobs as well, so. I would like to see it. Use more commercially less those apartments. I like the concept, I get it. But in that spot, you know, I, I much rather keep that open for something bigger.
I will say it's, it's hard from a engineering standpoint to help create that walkable environment. Where you're walking to your businesses if there's not mo- multifamily. Typically, I mean, you're not going to have single family. Business centers typically not along Butler Road, so. It's, I feel like it's a little bit of a balance of, you know, what y'all, we all want the city to look like, I guess, at the end of the day, um. I mean, we, meeting the staff, I mean, we, we, we thought this was good because it created that walkability. What? You had an acre there, what, what could that be? Could that be some sort of small um. Commercial uh, like clothing district or shopping center or um, even a small little grocery store or something like that. And having a multifamily adjacent to the commercial, you create a walkable kind of situation, whereas. If this is all commercial, nobody from Salem Meadows is walking here. Or Mountain View, you know, so it's, it's what do you want, what do you want the city to look like, I guess?
Yeah, I can tell you right now, walkability in this town. It's, it's questionable in my opinion, but I've watched people walk down the street with no sidewalks in rain and ditch. To get to it, so walkability piece, it's still there for our town. All we've got to do is some minor key things to it, so that. Walkability piece does, doesn't sell it to me nonetheless. Again, I like to keep this open as a, an actual open availability for a bigger commercial property that. Like a big box or, you know, a restaurant that needs extra space or where it may be.
Well, if you look like at Weddington right now, a lot of what they're doing, putting that massive sidewalk in there. For that piece right there, because it was dangerous. People even on that bridge trying to ride a bike while people are, I mean, we're not Weddington exit, don't get me wrong, but. What I'm saying is, this intersection is going to be one of the busiest in town. I would, I would love to see more of a setback and more of a sidewalk to provide, like what you said, the, the walkability from. That commercial property to Salem Meadows, to Mountain View Estates, like what keeps those kids? Out of the street. You know, and what keeps families not always just having to drive over there, you know? Is there an opportunity there? I don't know. And maybe that's something in our codes or in our developments as they go. You know, there's that dedicated space for that because. That, the kids are going to be in the street. That's all there is to it. The kids are in the street.
I see all the time.
Anyone in the audience that wants to speak on behalf of this project or opinion?
Since I spoke so negatively about it, I go, oh, I do, because like, when he's saying, not driving to Johnson. I, I think the same thing, like I love the way it's not to look and I was making progress and we're, making it forward for really. You're just looking at my mind.
Yeah.
So we're just all to understand uh. Maybe the vision that they have and for us, if it sounds like I have sixty or forty, that's what I hear. And I, and I, and we like to leave our, I think I learned this. But, but hopefully it doesn't become that. So I don't see the vision that they're seeing.
And it's hard to spend the money to get a visual. You know, it may not even happen. I, I give that to, that's tough, but it's one of those deals like. Man, it'd be nice to see what you're looking at here, because if I'm driving down. You know, or if I've got family coming to town and driving down, like it would be cool for them to be like, hey, that would be cool. You know, and it can have apartment complexes in the back and it'd still be okay. It's one of those deals, like it does feel weird in the concept and just saying that. But you're right, it does provide, like if this apartment complex was a young adult type apartment complex with young adult type. Commercial facilities, that's a unique little place right there. And then you still have families who can frequent it too that are right down the road. And for every commercial business, that's, that's a great spot with a thousand houses just within a block, you know? So it's, it's not a no for me, it's a, I, I just, I just don't have the feel for it. It feels weird. It feels rushed. It feels like, like you kind of made mentioned. We can afford it if we do this, because those apartments will be full before our commercial will be. But you kind of have to have the people sometimes to get the business to be there, so.
I think the flex space and the dealership would come online. Yeah, it's, it's just the commercial outlaw that's, that's not the immediate. Uh, flex place and trail, that is, uh, he can speak on that. I mean, it's a boat dealership for the other one. Feel free to, Wayne, however you.
So I'm understanding, starting to understand, I feel like I understand your vision and I know what you're talking about when you're talking about community bonds and so. Not saying we could do this, we'd obviously have to look at feasibility, but sub out the first four of the apartments for retail. And lots above that. Would that be something that would maybe be more appealing to you guys? As well as you.
I, I think the, the more you, you add commercial into a project like that, the more you're going to catch people's ears. Because for me, and I don't want to leave any of this, you know, the property to. That, that's just my personal opinion, but also know that it'd be mixed use for a reason. And so I do know that the, the more you can balance all. Or if they belong with it, then, then it's always that. I mean, in fact, maybe Dr. Campbell had left, but me and Dr. Campbell were going. I wonder if they'll just take away one of those apartment complexes that had another business in, so that the percentage is done. So I mean, essence, that's what we're sitting back here whispering to each other as far as the project was concerned, because. I understand y'all's side of the financial aspect, because we're quite, I think, just that the way you make money is to, to put people under risk. And, and it's a lot easier to, to make money off the apartment complex than it is the, the business. But I think it makes it more interesting and with that, I'll turn it back a little bit to the people that actually mattered, that, that actually vote for it. But I do think it helps, but I don't know if it would've been, well, I guess y'all obviously decided to move the needle or not.
That sounds better, I think what you're saying, that kind of stuff fits better, right? I imagine just. Small ratty apartment sitting out there.
Sure.
This old brick building with one entrance, everybody goes up the stairs and there it is, right? There's your just.
And just, just to be clear, like we, we are not outside of private equity money or developers or anything like that, like. We are going to be custom building the boats in that dealership. We are going to be operating and possibly even occupying the flex space, so like. It's us, the ones putting in the money, we're going to be working there and building and crafting there on site. So obviously we, we want it to work for us, but. And feasibility, commercial property, the, the, the cost of. You know, we're, we're looking at, you know, potentially half a million dollars as far as just getting the infrastructure where we need it. So, you know, we couldn't just stack that, you know. Plus we, we tried, but we can't get like free. So we're trying to set, what can it do with speeds and say, okay, if you stack all this onto the original. Reason we bought this property, which was for the business. Those numbers get a little bit scary, so we're like, okay, what can we do density wise? Personally, and, and I, and Steve here is part of this as well, like, I, I personally, we would love for it to be, you know, commercial as well. Um, again, like something has to pay the bills also, right?
I wonder, and I don't have the data, but you know, I wonder what commercial property occupancy rates are in Prairie Grove. Like, is it easy to go find an office for a real estate agent, you know, or is this something where the first four would provide that? You know, are people working for that?
I only have one example. What I had a guy call me last week is that the next time a little building comes up, like a strip mall building, he wants to know if we're working fully. So that's only, it's only one person that called, but we got that phone call last week.
Because I remember uh, just like the little. Cause I remember, uh, just like the little Ogden strip mall there between Prairie Grove and Farmington, but still in Prairie Grove, but you know what I mean? What used to be between Prairie Grove and Farmington, you know, that was full before it was finished.
Yes.
You know, like, so what is our, you know, opportunity there? And then too, like what, what if we had a little brew pub or what if we had a little coffee shop or, I mean, those things would be cool with something right above it to live also. I mean, that's not, but then you go back to the other side of it is and you do have a lot more people and kids and interaction between commercial and, and families. Like then what does it look like? How does that function? But man, I, I love the business side of it. The, the apartments did feel weird, but maybe that is the transition, like he was saying, rather than apartments, then storage units. Maybe it's more of the mixture and then storage units, but.
But you know, cause what they're saying about putting the businesses at the bottom and all at the top, that isn't that what you're talking about with that unique to be able to not, I will instead of having apartments and then businesses, we, we really do have a mixtures with apartment and business together. And then, uh, the, the walkability and the few of us change a little bit. Once again, it's hard when you're just looking at my mind, but I, I think, I think part of what they're, what they're seeking tonight is the, is y'all, it's the understanding of how to get to a yes, right? Or we're never going to get to a yes, we can stop waiting in my mind.
Right.
But, uh, you know, the other side of it, you know, like this, and the truth is I sat in on that first meeting and I sat there and we thought it was good and it took me about a week and then I finally went to Chuck and just said, hey, what you thought? He was so good. And I just said, feel like we, we got two businesses that thought he wanted to fall. It's like that's, it, it took a few days for me to get to that spot, but eventually my mind just goes, all we're doing is giving up commercial property for apartments. And, and once again, with these gentlemen, it's justified. Like it's, it's financial. I mean, the business y'all have to figure out that, that that gray area of, of how we make our money back on this investment. So it's not a knock on y'all gentlemen. It's just that our job as planning commissioners, the mad city administrators is to make sure that we, we continue to do the city in the direction that we want. So 20 years later, someone might ask, I mean, why in the world we got all these departments on a bypass, you know?
Urgent.
And then y'all thought it's a journey and surgery though. That was a mistake on our part. And we had to, we really had to pay people to come in and write a re, you know, redevelop all the things. Just to protect ourselves before the bypass became all storage buildings. And so it was one of those things that, that maybe by the time you catch it, it's, it's almost to say too late. And then to realize, man, we gotta change something. Otherwise our bypass is going to become storage buildings.
Going back, just so we can talk for all night, but as you started talking about like a dealership, I was thinking cars and I was thinking like your, your lots there on like I-49 where they're all kind of settling there now so they can build their showrooms, right? And then you're talking about maybe the manufacturing facility type deal i- in conjunction. So that would be one thing that I would just be concerned about. We talked about like the industrial side of wool, how it, it needed to change. But I'm sure you're talking more like your, you know, your, uh, showroom for being commercial side or roadside. And then that's something you gotta think about on the backside for us with the apartments being there. Is it more of an industrial feel on the backside of that? And then you go back to the, the feeling, the aesthetic, you know, but that would be something as you get developed in your plan, that it would be tough to kind of look around, you know?
That was my question as well. If we're building a bus, we're falling into manufacturing. Does that zoning allow that? Was that commercial zoning allowing manufacturer? I mean, it's mixed use, but I don't know that it would support manufacturing.
I could follow anything that's true.
Yeah, the mixed use is residential and, and commercial. And I would have to look into.
It's like.
Not manufacturing.
About the equivalent of installing speakers in a car.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's a showroom for.
Yeah, finishing out of it. It's a building.
Yeah, it was, it was, that was like, I, I wanted to throw it out there because it would have that future of like, man, how industrial is that going to be?
Yeah.
Whereas like you can also think of like your, uh.
He was offering accessories.
Yeah, like your back road type showroom type deal on that road right there. It sounds amazing.
Do you build that though?
Well, you know, you know what I'm saying? The outdoorsy feel there is awesome.
Yeah, the, the dealership, the, the buildings itself, uh, we're very confident that like you, you're going to like what's going in there. It's, it's not just going to be a big ugly white metal building with steam stack coming out of the top or anything like that. There, there will be a sense of dealing with it.
Good. Man, I'm not a hard no. I'm, I'm a almost like a let it sink in and see something more visual. Like, but I, I'm not a hard no. I'm an I don't know.
That's where I'm at.
I'm, I'm like, not a hard no, because I, I like the idea. I love the fact that the more commercial come in and the boat thing is unique. You know, another little section there would be unique. That acre lot is going to bring somebody, somebody's going to want that. Especially because they can, uh, pass a lot of those costs off on you guys with the list station and everything. It becomes even more appealing for them. Thank you for that.
But we're not building something that equalizes, that equalizes from what we were paying for a commercial facility.
We've already had talks with Grand Savings Bank, so potentially bringing on a branch there. So they, they were customers and partners anyway. Found out what we were doing and said, well, we don't want to build a branch because they're currently building a branch in Farmington as well. And so they, we, we've already had a sit down lunch meeting with them. We were thinking of gas station. You know, we were thinking, hey, there's a case that we're really, maybe that shit is becoming though, but then it looks like they might try to be moving in to do that anyway. So.
And you know, when we adopted the new zone of code, we, we adopted that highway front end to have a mixed view that, um, knowing that these kind of projects were going to come in. You know, one thing you gotta consider as far as feasibility of any business is you've got to have the traffic and the foot traffic. And that's one thing these mixed use developments do is they, they create traffic onsite for these businesses. So there's got to be a good balance. I think, I think that's what you're always looking for. But I, I was, I was a walking angel.
I, I do like your ideas of what, like the bottom, it's, I feel like I feel, it was different.
Tables?
I'm, I'm not, but I, I feel like, uh, you can move me a little bit to the, I don't know, like where, where you're just hearing, hearing you talk makes more sense than a ring alarm and looking at it.
True. And the other part would be, you know, boats and apartments don't sound as like the boat is a, is a specialty item for those that are involved with that. You know, kind of like the truck outfitter stuff, like those, there's certain people like, I'll, I'll never spend money on something like that because I'm scared my wife would be, you know, like there's, there's those things that I won't do, but there's other opportunities in this area for something. Now, if you just had a strip of office space and you guys said, you know, you might even be using it. You have a strip for a showroom, you might be using that. And then you have an acre for a couple for a bank. The apartments aren't using any of the things that you said. And so that would be the walkability thing kind of, it, it doesn't matter anymore now. But with the space under the apartments and an office or a real estate or a coffee shop or a brew pub or what, whatever it is, that sounds a little bit more walkable feel. I think the boat thing sounds a lot more perfect for the bypass for aesthetics and the showroom for sure. But it's not really like, hey, we want this right in the middle of your community. It's more of a, it's a show. It's, it's a, it brings people from outside of town in our town to spend their money, which is a blessing too. Um, but as you go about it with the mixed use space and we say walkability, walkability, walkability. The showroom actually isn't for walkability. It's more for bringing in people from outside of town. And if I was going somewhere to shop in a showroom, the apartment's might be a distraction because some people are uncomfortable with those if they don't look great. But with them being more commercial and higher end. Well, now it's like, hey, we'll go look at some boats. We would get a cup of joe and, or a beer and walk over. What would be cool is if you could get a beer and go walk over and look at most at the same time. That's where the money's at probably, but.
Get two beers and get them over and fine.
Yeah.
That's where you gotta be careful, careful of the while.
Yeah, yeah. I can, you can always blame the booze, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not a hard no. I would love to table it really. I mean, uh, I don't know if y'all would prefer that, but uh, and speaking to you guys here, I would, I would love to table it and think about it and see a little bit more. Like I just, I'm, I'm not a hard no. Like I like it. I'm just not, I just can't like go full bore. Yes. I feel like I need more information. I, that's just where I feel like, I guess it's an awesome idea.
I, I understand where, where you're coming from, but just being a small business owner, so obviously like these concepts and more information, it's yeah, the, the, the skills running. So I mean, could we perhaps schedule another meeting where maybe we can sit down and talk about it and then we'll know, hey, if we can meet these metrics or, or if we can agree on a vision that everyone's looking for, maybe we do a little bit of feasibility, like could we afford to knock out this bottom floor glass front and make, you know, six or eight shops in here? Like could we potentially make that work? I could, could we schedule a meeting, discuss that before we, you know, have to come back with full blown concepts? Cause it's I, I don't, I don't want to speak from other partners, but there's just only a certain amount of money you're willing to light on fire before you have to know whether or not it's, it's going to find its way back.
And my concepts, I think maybe if you would just come up with some examples of something similar, that might help them with that.
Even like a picture board type, that sounds.
Not have to spend a lot of money is what I'm thinking. They don't, they don't want to play, play like worth the whole thing.
And can we do, I mean, I don't know if that's their goal, but could this be done in phases too, to help with the financial side? Like if it was brought to phases?
Yes.
Just to help you guys not.
That's why we're kind of shooting for the four parcels is, is we do want to build it out in phases. Now, obviously the apartments would for sure be the last phase.
No, from their standpoint, they don't want to invest a lot of dollars not knowing if they're going to be able to get approved of it.
Yeah.
Somewhere down the road.
Concept doesn't sound good, you know? We don't want to waste three months of your time. Sure.
Larry, I don't think we ever talked a lot of special meetings on the planning. Well, the next, the next regular meeting is December the fifth, I think. So it's less than a month away, but if you do a special meeting, uh, has to be advertised just like any other meeting. Uh, you're going to be paying finding commissioners for the meeting as well. So.
Is there any way to get the information back and forth legally, just digitally, just so that we're getting eyeballs on it, getting the ideas and I know that.
We can share information. You just can't discuss it with anybody.
Just if we're being transparent, if sewer and water were to find its way down that hill, the market would go away.
They, they didn't have probably the infrastructure cost on this.
Sure. Yeah.
That's, that is what's, make no mistake about it. That's, that's what's, you know, three months ago, we, we had zero ambition of building apartments. Then you, you get to looking at infrastructure costs.
Extending waters to rely on Benji.
Yes.
And they're not coming that direction as fast as we would like. Correct? I mean, it's mainly based off the development and the developers.
I always drive utilities because you don't extend your, you don't extend utilities based on the cause. Uh, you don't build it so they will come. Cause if they don't come, you've expended millions of dollars.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm a citizen of Prairie Grove and I see something, I understand the others and, um, but sometimes there has to be that first to get everybody else going. And that's kind of how I see this. Like might not be perfect, but I think once you guys see what they can do, um, it might drive more people, especially with utilities already being.
We're, we're sitting down on the next section up from Park Street to Butler right now, but we're, we're seeing that happen as a domino effect right now.
Yes, Mr. Aldrich, since we're talking about how this development could help someone else. Um, as they put in a location, two and more, I know we go to to the adjacent property in essence, but we've done up the sewer that they're putting in, is it giving us anything as a city? Is it giving us the next land or anything like that?
I know Mr. Chuck has had those discussions with him and I think, I think it does benefit the next property.
Don't worry, you're going to have everything. Also, that's something that y'all need to think about as a planning commission as well. And maybe we can get Chuck to just send all of us to the mall and see how much it opens up property wise, because in essence, there is a huge benefit to the city. You approve a project like this. Part of the basis of your approval is, is it just helping that property or is it benefit when surrounding properties, you know? A lot of times when we look at lift stations, you're trying to build a lift station, but it's not just for, and how many acres is this gentleman?
This is five.
So you're not trying to, you're not trying to just see if it'll benefit the five. You're trying to see if it'll benefit the twenty that's around it.
Right.
And so that, that should be part of your decision as well.
Which Mountain View did that, right? You said you're pretty much going over to where Salem, Mountain View are pointed to. So that development.
Benefited them.
Benefited them, which some people would say all the hassles, but you know, it, it's driving this commercial development.
The work Domino is doing right now on their infrastructure is going to help all of the properties up the street to McDonald's. So that's unfortunate for a person usually bears most of the burden of cost, but that's where it either works.
This lift station will be deep enough for the property owners to the south to be able to get underneath the creek and get ready to this lift station. And I do think there's some benefit there for where the lift station is, because I think you potentially have the option for the other side of the road to get grab your sewer eventually to this lift station, which then gets it to, uh, the, the other one we have.
We've got another pump station, I think under design on the other side of the road, uh, just north of Butler right now. So it's, I don't know what the capacity of it is or what service area it has, but it's going to serve us a pretty big area out there.
That's good.
There's a good way to think about it because we may not like the apartments, but just like they may thought of the process on, on one apartment, but there's a, there's a, and, and you have to be willing to look at all of it. And what I said, I can't remember, I don't like it and hoping y'all are a little against it, but you still have to be willing to look at all details. And, and that's huge detail because it's a good benefit to the city.
Well, and when we talked about the, you know, the mixed use, I mean, that's the way I envisioned it was commercial on the bottom and you know, some.
It's funny because when Julie got the CEO, when we, when we, when it comes up on the mixed use, I mean, she, she showed love that. So I think that's how, uh, that's the way I'm on my seat.
I mean, we, we compared other places. I mean, you look at like the Branson landing. I mean, you've got commercial and you've got the, the residential up top.
They're all over.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Yeah. I don't know that, you know, when you say you think you could look at that, I mean, you think, you're thinking just part of the complex or you mean you, I don't know that you'd necessarily ask for the entire complex to be like that, but certainly.
Like strip in the middle.
Right.
Between the two would be the most advantageous for the fact that you have parking on both sides.
That, that's the easiest to swallow. Cause I know that, you know, there was need, they did need a certain number of residential units enrolled for this cash flow. It makes sense.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that means we can go up and Chuck, you know, the code better than I do by a long shot. I don't know if they can go up to the fourth floor and still have three floors residential or are they losing?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, you, you could, but I mean, you're, you're. Yeah.
Uh, you know, we lose what six units by doing that. Um, you know, keeping it isolated to that one building, I think it's an easier sale for the commercial on the bottom. Um, you know, than doing it on all the, all the residential units. So I don't know if that's so still a pretty big building for commercial on, on bottom.
Yeah, I don't know if I would need it on every building because I, I mean, it's easy with that road on the far west. It's the bottom, but the far west to be just residential, since it backs up to storage units, uh, it doesn't matter as much, but you know, your walkability with the boats and the, the bank in the strip mall or whatever you want to call it there. You guys had another, uh, flex space. Uh, you know, that, that space through the middle, definitely, especially like you said, the six.
Right. That doesn't make sense. I mean, is that something y'all are willing to caution about and entertain? Did you get that piece right there? Y'all are pointing that. It's like you said, you got twenty spaces there, parking on both sides. I don't want to speak for, for y'all or down, but that might be a good middle ground. That's something you can talk about.
And this doesn't help with the, the right now, but seeing what you envision that to look like, seeing what you envision that to look like. I now know what you envision that to look like. Seeing that, like that would make it a lot easier for me to be my yes or no right now, just because I, you know, but that could be a picture of something like he said, it's been done before. That doesn't help you at the moment. That's the unfortunate part, but.
So i- is there a way to get that back to you where have to wait another month?
That's a very question. I don't think there is.
No, you have to, you have to call the nation for a few yards to vote on it. Um.
And that's not us trying to gouge, that's just us.
Sure.
This.
Like we're, we're just trying to get as, as much handouts tonight as we can, because unfortunately we miss a deadline where, you know, we're, we're trying to get all this. This, like, we're, we're just trying to get as, as much handle tonight as we can, because unfortunately, we miss a deadline, you know, we're, we're trying to be on this last month, because. You know, we wish back another month, it's just.
Keep, keep in mind what you're voting on tonight is just whether or not to allow multifamily on that property, you're not. Deciding on design or anything else that will come back in the form of large scale, you could have additional conversations about all these issues then.
But if we're gonna. We've kind of been doing.
Yeah.
Luckily for, for the conversation side of it, but.
But I, I know the two are tied together and they're weaved together somewhat, um, but.
But the vote is just.
The vote is just whether or not to allow multifamily on that property.
It's not specifying the density or anything like that, it's just, would y'all theoretically be okay with residential in conjunction with commercial?
But then what gives us, what gives us the ability to? Say we, you know, we don't want sixty apartment complex, I mean, if we approve it, I mean, are we approving, yes?
When you're looking at large scale, I mean, you can take one thing into consideration as well, you know, traffic, uh, flow, um. Again, we do have design standards that they have to go by on multifamily, but I think you can make the same comments you're making tonight, um. Just keep in mind though, if you do make a yes vote tonight, that they will be allowed to put some type of multi family.
Right.
Can we look at, I guess, can the intent of what we talked about just now govern when we do the large scale design? That, hey, we know y'all aren't cool with just three stories of that, we would not propose that, because y'all are gonna turn it down. We obviously understand that, we need to, uh, come up with some different options, and with the large scale, we would have renderings of all these buildings as well. Um, obviously that takes a little bit of time, and they're, they're working on.
They're just waiting for that next chat.
Yeah, I hate to be this guy, but I don't know still about giving up the commercial. To make it awesome, and I'm not trying to down jump for another month, but. Y'all don't want me to vote tonight, that's what I'm trying to do.
Of course, keep in mind, I mean, you're not, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be giving, giving all of it up, I mean, obviously we'd be giving some up.
Right, I get that.
But you get that first floor.
With what he has right now, it'd be hard to not be a no for him with what he has right now.
Right.
Which is like.
Give, give some time to think, man.
Yeah. I'm def- I'm definitely moved. From the hard no over to maybe, and now I'm kind of like, yeah, it'd be cool to see.
I mean, maybe, but I'm also at a, man, am I gonna look back in a week after thinking about this and think, I shouldn't have done that?
Yeah.
And that's where I'm at.
It'd have been cool to see all of this forward. And been more prepared, like you said, like the special meeting, but like just had this stuff to be chewing on before we got here.
This is the first we've seen it or heard about it, honestly, so we're kind of.
Correct.
Throwing the wolves on it all. I think as long as you can make things, you kind of unique, you know, not just like I said, just an old rally looking apartment. And, and I'm not, like you said, not trying to gouge anybody, I, I want y'all to succeed in what your, your vision is.
For sure.
It's just hard for us to kind of see what, like you said, your, your vision. But that's, I'm not a hard no, and I'm, I'm in the middle, like, kinda like y'all are here. As long as it can be just something different, appealing to people, or. I know y'all's businesses are gonna do great, and I know what you're gonna do with it all, it's gonna be fantastic, I, you know, I believe in y'all for doing that. And it won't be just an industrial building, it'll have curb appeal, it'll look good, I know it will.
Will be a lot of curb appeal.
Yes. I'm hung, you know, just because I can't see what the apartments are gonna be.
And I'm familiar with all the areas that you're, that you're referencing, you know, when you're talking about Johnsons and some of that, I'm familiar and, and. I see Robin Frickers.
Thank God so much, though.
Sure, and, and, you know, I certainly don't want to speak out of pocket without our third partner hearing this, but. You know, he, he's pretty good with it, he's worked on a lot of, some of the projects you guys are mentioning, he's actually the one that's worked on those, so, you know, I, I'm pretty confident. That if, if we, if we walk away into saying, yes, there is a possibility of some multifamily. That can be worked in, if we can dress this up, and if we can get some green space, and if we can get some retail space, like. I feel like we have enough synergy in the room to where we, we see what you guys would like to see. And so we can leave this meeting and sort of go down that path, you know what I mean?
I know, I know John's not here, I've seen John's work, I've, I've watched him do a lot of that stuff, so I agree with what you're saying, like, Elon has.
He doesn't do ugly.
He's got, he's got to be quality work, I've seen a lot of it, it's on university, it's all over the place, so I've seen what he's done, he does do a good job.
Larry, can you tell us what the, um, requirements are for, uh, the, the commercial design standards for residential stuff, just so we all. Got it, I don't know, tell them, you know?
Uh, I'm not gonna try to quote them off the top of my head, but I mean, uh, are you familiar with requirements at all?
It's been a minute, I wouldn't say.
Yeah, they're, they're fairly new as well, they've been adopted since the last year, year and a half, and aren't they been adopting since May? Uh, but there's some masonry requirements on, um, I, I can't tell you what all the details are without looking at my policy on it.
It's not gonna be siding, you know, it shouldn't be masonry up to a certain level, I'm sure, or, you know, less heavy looking on that.
I'll, I'll send that to you.
Party word.
Monday or Tuesday, Monday of the holiday, but I'll send it to you Tuesday. It's actually in our development cover.
Sure. So really it kind of comes down to, do we want to try to put it to a vote? Because they need the information, they want the information, and risk it not having the chance to get legs? Or do we want to table it and get information, which puts them at a disadvantage? But it gives them the opportunity to sway us, and then again, we could also then go right back to a no, but it. Um, I think I can sway it.
I'm not saying I can't be swayed.
Yeah, that's, that's my fear, I, that's my feeling on that.
I mean, it's, but, this, I mean.
How do you, how do you feel? Do you feel comfortable enough of what you've heard to take a table and bring us back some more information and, and go? I mean, do you think you, you tell your investors that, I mean, you're, you're hearing some positive energy, but at the same time, they, you want to, we want a little more. Positive reinforcement of what, what kind of neighborhood it's gonna be?
I, I do, yes, absolutely, and I see your vision that it's the, just to be frank, it's the timeline that's, if everything's under thirty days, under thirty days.
If, if we put it to a vote and it wasn't no, just because I don't know everybody's vote, what's the process then?
I'm not sure, conditional use, if they can ask.
Come back and ask for it again, how long do you have to wait?
I don't know that there's a timeframe on conditional use.
It's not like any, or.
Don't, owning it has to be twelve months, but I don't believe there is a.
Because I just don't want to cut them out of the opportunity, if that was the case, right? I, I don't want to say, yeah, let's do what you want, let's go to a vote, everybody wants to know, but now you gotta wait six months.
I don't believe there's, I mean, if you voted no, I don't believe there's any, anything that would prohibit them from coming back next month, but don't fault me on that, because. Once I think things have changed, so.
If we do approve this, how do we hold their feet to the fire? Honestly, I mean, I'm not saying we don't trust y'all, but how do we hold their feet to the fire?
Large scale development.
So when they bring it to us, we can say yes, no, yeah.
We're gonna have the same discussion we're having.
Yeah, we're, we're.
That, we just cut out probably that next step. Of the first thing that they brought to us, correct?
The first barrier.
And keep, you know, keep in mind, if it's, if you prove. For multifamily, they bring it back to large scale, and you need to have some definitive criteria for why. You don't want them to do things a certain way, uh, either they're gonna generate, you know, none of green space. I mean, I think that's a valid concern, especially with families, I think, uh, traffic is a valid concern, depending on how many units are in there. I mean, but there needs to be something definitive, it can't just be we don't like it.
Yeah.
And our original goal was to submit in February or March the large scale plan, but we could bring something in January. For years of layout, you know, have basically a concept sketch discussion based on what we're talking about tonight as well, um, if that.
I know on some of our plugs, they've actually brought us examples of what finished product would be, and they don't have to be the exact, you know, product, but something similar. And I think that helps them visualize a whole lot better what's gonna be in there.
Right.
Yeah, I, I one hundred percent will get your elevations and all those things in January, you know, move forward on.
Um, I make a motion then to, uh. Uh, I would say make a motion to vote on, uh, so that I would phrase that as. Make a motion to approve, right?
Yes. Be approved, yes, approved, conditional use to allow multifamily to be to mixed use.
Yeah. What he said, I would read it off here, but it's not.
Have a motion and a second to, uh, approve. Conditional use permits, request for multifamily and a B two mixed use, any further discussion? And then all those in favor say aye? Opposed? Nah, um.
And that's where the table would be handy with Bree and Church, them, and then I did.
We're missing two members for that.
Yeah, that really, it wouldn't get us as hung as we have here.
I need to ask Larry a question.
Cause that's, she's really, really, really sharp at this stuff. Yeah, she's so sharp at this stuff, I don't know, because I'm more of a.
I, I mean, that's something you've got to return, I think that.
Just drop it all down.
Let's get it's a customer on a business.
I do think we eliminated one of the meetings of, in the timeline thing that you're talking about, I think you just eliminated even meetings or talks. Go through them, but it doesn't, you know, doesn't do what you mean here, but it eliminate probably, you might want to large scale, any bad potential. And we went through everything, and had it come back to the next month with that same large scale, I think you probably eliminated that, if, if it was true exactly. We're a lot closer there, for sure.
Uh, I am the tie breaking vote, and to be completely transparent, I do have. Business relations with one of the investors. Um. I don't a hundred percent feel com- comfortable making tie breaking vote, but. I'm gonna make the tie breaking vote regardless if I vote or not, um. Mister Mayor, do you have any? Input on that? Don't need to be transparent, uh, one of the investors, uh, utilizes my wife's daycare. So therefore there is financial, and I do not want to seem like I'm biased for that reason.
Talked to. Thinking about this a few times with, um, Sue Clark, who I'm on council, everyone has relationships with the family. What he has showed us, what Minnesota has showed us, is that you should never tell someone to vote or not to vote, that that person has to be able to justify. Whether or not they should vote or not vote, and. I think you go back, a lot of trust, if you feel like someone could formulate and say, you only did this for that reason. Then you have to weigh that option in your spirit, um, you know, truthfully, it's not necessarily what video libraries have, it's what the public knows.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, that. I honestly, I mean, I like the idea, just like what we've talked about, I mean, I like the, the, uh. The ability to have the mix, and just like I said, that's what, how I envisioned it was, you know, some commercial on the bottom. And residential up top, um, and the, the investor that has the. You know, utilizes my wife's services, he has not asked me anything other than, uh. In fact, the, the reason that this problem was just purely happened, stands as far as tonight, because. It wasn't on the agenda, and he told my wife that he's gonna see me tonight, and I'm like, well, he's not even on the agenda, so, um, there has not been any communication, so therefore we're not. Hmm, I wish we had. Couple more seats, but as I say, it's gonna be a tie breaking vote one way or the other. I'm gonna vote yes, just because I will, I do want to see that next step, but I, I, I want to be clear that, I mean, it's not gonna be just. I don't think that everyone's gonna look at it and say, wow, sixty apartments is gonna be good, I mean, I, it's gonna have to be something that we. Feel is gonna work in that, that environment to be, uh, good, because I mean, I. I mean, I don't want just another apartment complex, um.
Something in January where I ring before y'all, and we have more of a workshop type environment, and kind of go back and forth and stuff.
There is a.
Meeting in December.
December fifth.
I got a conflict, but I mean, they, they could, I just started having a meeting that night, so. And we want to survey back and have everything bought. We can at least maybe show you some pictures and make you feel better about it, maybe just.
I think, I think that might save some time down the road.
Sure, I mean, I, I feel like I understand where you're dragging, we live in the communities too, so, and we're gonna be there day and day. Think I understand, love to be able to walk over and grab a bagel and cup of coffee or whatever, so I, I get it, I do.
We'll, we'll put this on the agenda of, uh, just a content discussion for next month.
Okay.
And that way you can prevent whatever you feel comes.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
I was gonna say, we will start this building's boat dealership and apartments. I feel like they're gonna distract from my business, but I think we're gonna make it look. You know, where it's like all blended together, look nice, you know, that's kind of mine, because I didn't like the day apartments, and so. If we can make it look presentable, make it look, you know, like it all blended together, like it's supposed to be very nice to me, let's not compare it. So, I didn't, I didn't want to be just more ready apartments and, uh, square block building for boat dealership, we'll make it nice, you know, people into the eye. As I said, I just didn't want to, apartments distract from our business, so it'll be nice, so.
We appreciate the back and forth.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we certainly want to build something we're all proud of at the end of the day, so we definitely appreciate you all being good and working with us.
I was gonna say the same thing, as the, as the man of the sound, that, that discussion was, was wonderful. Because it allows, if we can get out, unfortunately, you want. No matter what side of the coin, I mean, you'll be sitting on, the one discussion, there's definitely not that, that I'm gonna, yeah, I do.
Any other comments on that, all right? Look forward to seeing what you have, have to propose to us.
Thank you, Alan.
Uh, with that, we'll reconvene as the Board of Adjustments to hear a various request. Uh, for fence height requirement in R one zone requested by Don Stearman at one twenty seven Angus Drive. Yes, come tell us what, uh.
And we have, we have pictures on the screen here.
I've got some new neighbors that have been there for like about four years, his first time home buyer. The previous owners, they lost it, and he bought it for a hundred and thirteen, first time home buyer. And it's just like he's dunking it up, they're vulgar. Two years ago, I had three hundred dollars worth of plants built on the outside of my fence. For a privacy hedge, he killed them, I made a police report. I showed you the, I showed Larry the letter that his mother. Wrote me a couple weeks ago, he had a sign out on his, a huge sign out on his street facing Fiddler Lane saying. My happiness depends on making you miserable. Yeah, he was there for about a year, and then he put a, had this lettering on the back of his. Uh, back of his, um, car that's, it's something to, it's like anti-police and stuff like that. Anyhow, I can't go out in my yard and look at him without him saying, what the F are you looking at? I have, I can give you the names of three men who witnessed his behavior. One being Jim Gallin, he was doing some plumbing for me a couple years ago, and he saw how he came out and just. Just his actions, he, um. Um. A friend of mine, who's the engineer out of Politech, I'm friends with him and his wife. He was in my driveway looking at some plants, and the guy came out and he just. He just, he just came out of his house to get into his truck, which is planted on my, planted parked on my property. Jim's tall, and he looked that way, and the guy just said, what the F are you looking at? And I just, that's how they talk all the time. I feel inc- and I'm. I feel inc- and I'm, I'm having it surveyed tomorrow. The property line is a little further than what I thought it had been and I wanna put a privacy fence up. But I wanted to extend it a little further than what is allowed.
And by a little farther, how much were you talking?
Twenty, twenty-five feet.
Awesome.
Not a whole, not a whole lot. He's just scary, he's scary, he's really, really scary.
Don, Don, is your picket fence still up?
Yes.
It is still there.
But it's, but when, I have two old dogs and when they're gone, the picket fence is gone.
Well, my, my question was, as far as the privacy fence, were you thinking about?
Can I walk over there?
Please, that would be helpful. Just kinda show them what you, what you're requesting.
Oh, okay, can you, okay, here's my, okay. Okay, here's like where the property line is and there's a.
So it wouldn't be with picket fences, it would be.
Oh, yeah, 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 way further on the other side of the picket fence. So, I don't know whose car that is, I thought it was my sister's, but she said it wasn't. But they're coming out in the morning to put stakes and pins. And I've got two boats. And two trucks that are in my yard. And she had said, you're lucky I haven't already cut those shrubs down because she, she's claiming them.
And have you had your survey completed?
In the morning, between seven and eight o'clock.
So at that, at that point, once the lines are surveyed, you know, if they're, if they're parked on you, feel free to call the police department and they will assist you.
We've already talked about that.
Okay, we have.
The current. Code for the fence is what?
Basically, a privacy fence can stop at the front face of the house. And then after that, uh, if it's a solid fence, it can't be over thirty-six inches in the front yard. If it's a fence that's visible, like a chain link or something like that, it can be forty-eight. But you have to be able to see, and the, and the purpose for that again is when you're backing out driveways, you need to be able to see both directions of the street.
They need a fence all around their property, it looks like a salvage yard.
How close is it gonna be two from two to the road?
Oh, not that close, I just wanted to wear when I walk out, because when I take my dogs out, I go out with them, I won't let them out by themselves. And I go out there, but I, I have to look out a window to make sure he's not out there before I go out there. First time you come to my house, I told you, I said, if he comes out, don't make eye contact with him.
I'm sure they do.
I, I don't think you talked to him, I think it was his mom.
I talked, I talked to him.
For?
Yeah, he was mowing the grass one day, I sent him a letter about mowing and I drove by, we, we discussed it.
It's about forty feet.
He mowed once this summer.
From the front of the house to the road edge. And she's asking for how far?
How far, so how far off the road are you wanting to bring that to? I'm sorry, I still haven't got, I don't, can't wrap my mind around.
The road, maybe just an extra twenty feet from the front of the house?
Fifty percent?
Maybe.
And you said it's how far, forty?
Yeah, I mean fifty percent sounds about right, like it's about forty, twenty would be about right. But that fifty percent would allow for someone getting out of a driveway. To see no matter what, that way, I, I actually like the percentage better than I like the footage.
Right.
Because uh. You know, you can, you can do that. Stretch that, but the percentage would allow at least half of the front yard to be where you can see down the road.
Someone that's inside corner and that, that's an inside, but it doesn't block any views at all.
So when you bring that fence. Between, on your property line between the two houses, how are you gonna terminate it? Are you gonna bring it back? I mean, you're not talking about. Wrapping around your front yard.
It's just, just.
Just, just a screen then, just.
This is divided basically between your neighbor, target one.
Yes, yes.
And his driveway is on the opposite side of that house, so it would be about the ends.
Yeah, yeah, his driveway is on the other side.
Which the variance usually is only allowed, you always say this.
Typically, there's gonna be some sort of hardship to grant variance, I did talk to him about that. One day that, you know, typically when we think of hardships, we think of, you know, something permanent like a tree or a drainage ditch or.
Rethought in a neighbor.
Yes. And I, and I do get that neighbors can be hardships, there are neighbors that are hardships, but I don't think in the true sense of a hardship.
And I just, like, I'm thinking of the other side, we have them for a reason. We shouldn't go against them or you should just change the coast, we're not doing this all the time, but at the same time. What does this affect having one fifty percent other than the safety of driving in and out?
I, I think the other purpose of it is. And you can imagine what neighborhoods would look like if they brought privacy fences out in between them reality, it would look.
It allows her to go out into the front yard where he can't see her.
Yeah, yeah.
But the, for, for if everybody did it.
If everybody did it, I think, I think you would see it as a problem. And you would, you know, if you, if you're out enjoying your front yard and you've got that, you know, view up and down the street, you're gonna lose that view, every neighbor will lose that view.
I don't even like, I don't feel comfortable working on that side of my house.
I mean, most people have a, have some expectation of privacy in their backyards, but not so much in their front yard through the faces of the street.
And the other option would be the tall fence in between on the property line, but terminating. Or coming back towards the front of the house.
Privacy fence around the backyard now?
Yes.
If you look to the west of the house, there's already a fence backed out already, so it wouldn't, it's actually closer to the road than what she's talking about, so. I mean, it wouldn't look too crazy out of place, in my opinion. Like I, I was just looking at it on street view and there's.
You talking about on the other side?
Yeah, one, between one twenty-seven and one twenty-five.
Yeah, that fence was constructed years ago.
Okay. It's still there.
Yeah.
I think so.
And that fence is there because. It's, someone built a low income house there and these are first time house. A small, little tiny house and they thought my yard was their yard. And they were parking in my yard and driving across my yard and. Some are basics.
Mr. Man, this doesn't matter at all, honestly. And I'm just trying, my question kind of not, I just really wanna visualize it. So if, if it would allow you to come twenty feet out, do you plan on just stopping it there or you're gonna do it three foot, the thirty-six inches? Rather than just the middle of the yard and you just got this weird fence that just.
No, we'll have it cut down somewhat.
Thirty-six.
Is thirty-six?
Yes, once we, if, if it depends on what these guys approve, if they approve you twenty feet. From the front of the house, then at that point, it'll have to go down to thirty-six if you use the same fence.
Okay.
Right now, you can do the thirty-six from, you can bring your six foot privacy fence all the way to the frontage of your house. And then you could drop it down and you could run the three foot all the way to. I, I'm gonna say to the, to the street, but I don't know if you know. And so, all we were saying is that you have the variance, what you're asking for is a six foot. Uh, can I come out further than the code allows?
Yes.
So whether they say five foot, ten foot, or twenty foot, I was just curious if you would actually do the drop and do the.
Well, let's get closer to the street, but I'd like to keep it six foot as far as you'll allow me.
And if fifty percent doesn't get it for us, what would it, or is it just one of those deals where? Like he was saying, but you don't want to start that in the neighborhood, so you don't allow it anywhere.
You know what, that, I refer to, I've been there fifty years and it was like the second, it was one of the nicer neighborhoods. That area that I'm living, I refer to it as the slum district. I've got one on this side, huh?
I used to be your neighbors. I did.
You? What's your name?
Ryan Cook.
And then the other poor houses, they're just, they're horrible on the other side. But I love my house. Just not my neighbors.
I also think, you know, talking about the community or the neighborhood, if everybody had their house all the way. Uh, with fences tall and all the way to the road, you wouldn't like the feel of it. But at the same time, you do like the ability to go out in your yard. And it be your yard, like some people don't go in their front yard and say hi to everyone and interact, they go in the front yard, cause that's still their.
I walk the blocks every morning. I know everybody in the neighborhood and I'm just a very social person. I just don't let these people.
It's a question, do you feel like it's a hardship enough to grant them? Break the ice and break, instead of the precedent.
If you lived in my house for two years, you would say. Give that girl a fence and make him pay.
If it's gotten to the point that she's had to file a police report, that's like they're not giving nothing.
I have filed a police report because he, you saw my plants. They were beautiful plants and then just over, I mean, they were just like disintegrated, they didn't just die, you touched them and, and I had to. I filed a police report and they come up there and file the report.
And is it something where, like on the last deal, to help that person get what they need? Is there a percentage that you're more comfortable with? If the fifty percent is too much and may not help her, cause I mean, that's the other part of this, we're protecting. The community, but we're also trying to serve the constituents and so. Is there a percentage that you're comfortable with in this panel? If fifty's too much for you, is there something that you're more comfortable with that? That helps, because in reality, the three foot's happening no matter what. So. You just have to give another three foot for a minute, what's that minute that you're gonna allow? And.
As long as it's not a. You know, blocking people's view, they can't get in and out of the driveway, she's, she can get in and out of her driveway.
My driveway's on the opposite side.
It's not, it's not hindering anything other than. What, maybe, somebody may not think it's aesthetically pleasing out there essentially.
And the view that it blocks is the straight stretch, which is safer rather than the corner.
And when I put that other fence up, that's when Paul Jones was still here. And his wife, he was my neighbor and his wife. And her best friend walked the neighborhood and I was outside and they said, we love your fence. It blocks the trash, those people had, they'd moved in three storage sheds. But still, and a garage, but still trash all over. And coming from that way, it, I didn't do it to block the trash, I did it to. Keep them from driving and parking in my yard. I'm just in that little pie shaped corner. Where I don't have a whole lot of fried yard.
It's, it's hard, even without the hardship, it's hard for me to say no to it, it doesn't seem like that big of an ordeal. For a little bit of six foot tall fence past the house.
Now, you can't say six foot because our coast is unlimited high. And her other fence that I, I believe is like eight feet.
No, it's six.
The other one between the other neighbor, it looks taller than six feet.
No, it's six feet, no, because I.
She'd said six feet.
It is six feet, because when I ordered it, I told modern fence, I wanted eight foot, when they come out, they said, no, they told me then, no, you can't have an eight foot fence and. No, it's six foot. It's six foot.
So I'll make a motion to approve the variance with a, the six foot tall stipulation fifty percent. Of the front yard.
Okay, so motion and second to approve granting a variance to allow. A fence to extend. Fifty percent of the front yard from, I'm just gonna say from the edge of the house to the, to the road.
With a six foot max height.
Okay. Alright, I have a motion and a second.
Five feet, I don't need.
Have motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Hi, how you doing?
Oppose?
I remember you, just a little bitty guy.
Alright, you are approved.
Thank you so much.
Because you're getting a fence permit, if you, if, or whoever's gonna put your permit or your fence up, to make sure they're aware of that.
I'm sorry, oh, they need a permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When I did the other one, I didn't know I needed, I was young.
He probably didn't back then, there was.
I didn't know I needed, we didn't need a.
Not back then.
Did not put that fence on the property.
Oh, I stayed up all night long reading all the laws. And she can paint it pink if she wants to, I've read all the laws about fences.
Come by the city hall and we'll get a permit for you or something.
I will. Thanks guys, I appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Do I?
You're good, you're free to get it.
Thank you so much.
Item two is driveway variance request at one twenty seven South Border. Michael Green, how are you today?
Probably been one of your newest residents in this city. I've been around here for years, I don't know the history on this, I'm sure you guys know. That shop, probably been there for twenty-five, thirty years, nobody's ever built anything on.
Longer than that, I think. I think it's always, it's been there as long as I've been around, that's four years.
And everybody's kinda had an, easily been something with it, but they haven't, so I actually bought that in January, we've actually finished the house. Thank goodness Troy's got me though. Almost where we can get in this thing, it's actually uh, completed a hundred percent as we speak right now. Um, and that's a gravel entrance, a hundred and sixty-eight feet off the street, it's been that way for years. Um, I wanna leave it that way, I, I put gravel on it already a couple different loads to bring it up a little bit, but that. There's a lot of water that comes from the south coming back towards the north. That if we was to pave that or concrete that. Uh, it's, there's no culvert right there except on the uh, east side. There's a lot of water channels down through there, I'm actually more concerned with, I've watched that a couple different times over the years, this year we've had a lot of rain. Um, you know, at some point in time, I do wanna do something to dress that up and make it look nice, cause I put a lot of money into the house. Um, and that's, this would be the last open property I've even added entire vicinity that hadn't had a house built on it. And so we built a really nice place, not anything extravagant, not anything above the rest of the neighbors. If, if anything, I think we can improve the neighborhood, we, and I anticipate doing that going forward. Um. And that's really about it, um. And we tied on to that, that was a, a machine shop if I remember correctly.
It was.
And so I'm turning that into my garage, it looked like a great garage and that's what I've done, I've tied the house to it, so it really looks aesthetically really nice.
We're sorry to see, see the machine shop go, because we used to have a lot of work done for the city. From the gentleman that ran that machine shop.
Um, so, yes, and the shop actually been there for many, many years, it's actually in really good condition, I need to do a little bit more. Uh, aesthetics of the exterior of it, but uh, structurally, it's in great shape. The house that I built's really nice, everything's good, uh, I'm just asking to keep the driveway and I already understand about the fences. I have no intention of putting a six foot privacy fence anywhere. I always loved neighbors, I'm an extrovert, I love to talk to people, well, I already made good neighbors with their fri- friends with their neighbors there. Uh, and I do not think it's a great idea, in my opinion, until there is a culvert system that comes up that street. That there's gonna be a potential more water coming down through there that might channel over to the. I don't wanna sound derogatory, but the Canary House, the yellow one. And um, he's an elderly gentleman and I don't want him to feel like I'm imposing on him. The other side is the same way and both of those are not high elevation houses. And I think before we, and there's no culvert there, after that culvert on the east side, everything else just planes out. Including that driveway right there, but you can see it's been there for years, so there hasn't been any really damage or anything that washes out. But there, um, but there is a lot of mince water, if we start paving that, it's got, water's gonna channel across that street onto the other side too. I just think we could create some problems, with, I'm getting more complex than it needs to be. I'm just asking to keep it the way it is and, and maybe we kinda look at it, we go forward, I was kinda thinking more like something like a geotextile. Um. Entrance there, I want it to be beautiful and nice, uh, but right now, I'm, I, I just don't see that. I'm asking you to please leave it the way it is. And um, you know, just, you know, not on a whole different subject, I know this is your planning commission, but. My entire life has been building, I've done the point guy for Texas A and M Stadium, Texas Rangers. Cowboys Stadium. Uh. Probably built fifteen high-rise in Dallas, we're doing, uh just finishing two or three big jobs at U of A, I'm doing pinnacle hills. That's been my life and so if I ever thought that was gonna impose on somebody, I wouldn't even suggest that. And I wanna be a good steward of this city. My days are kinda going down here, I don't look to do anything to uh any dramatic, all, all reason I mention that is if I can ever help you guys on something, I would be glad to help you. If it ever come into our realm. Um, on the commercial side.
Just so we can kinda compare the neighborhood just a little bit, I know the two houses on the other side of you that both sit back quite a ways.
Yes.
They have gravel drives?
Yes, Mark's house is gravel drive, the other one is actually blacktop.
But it didn't used to be.
Sure.
I, I didn't realize it was painted, it didn't.
Jackie and Jackie and Greg was talking, it was painted.
Blacktop, um you know, without just doing some kind of census or anything. Uh I'm gonna say probably a half or close to half of those driveways up through there are gravel.
And it's an older neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
I kind of already addressed this with planning commission, but there's two types of waivers that they can grant. And one of them. If it was a, you're on a large tract of land.
Yeah, I, I don't have there.
But it's zone R one, it's not zone D, if it was zone D, you would meet the first waiver requirement because you exceed a hundred foot. And I think uh that was probably the first place I was gonna turn to, then I realized that it wasn't zone D. But the second waiver requirement says that if it's a previously non-conforming use, so that driveway's been there, like we talked about, for many, many, many years.
Yes, sir.
Uh they can grant a waiver based on the fact that it was a pre-existing before you ever built the house. The garage has been there for all that time and you've just added on to the garage, basically, it's an attached structure to the garage. Uh so they do have, it's within their uh allowance to go ahead and grant a waiver. The only difference between the two waivers is that if, if they do approve you tonight, the city council has to approve that second waiver as well, so it'll have to go to the, uh the city council in two weeks if they approve it, so.
Okay.
Is a little different than the other waiver.
And the use of it has not really changed. In fact, it would be less because it's not a machine shop, right, it would be less now.
And when it was a machine shop, he did, he didn't do a lot of outside business, he would, if somebody called him and said, would you make this for me, he would, but.
But it is less now than what it would be, so I don't see why, I don't see why the waiver would be a problem for me. If it's not changing, now, if he was running a business out there and there was traffic, totally different story. But if it's all the same as it's been.
And I did ask Troy and he said that tree's not there anymore.
Well, actually, there were three trees, I'm surprised they left them there, that was the very first thing we did was take them down, it was.
First thing I say trying to get to that garage is a tree running, tree running.
Yeah.
What uh, what brought this up if it was already there?
Because, because the, our code says.
Built a house.
There's house. Then you must have a hard drug surface dropped, you know.
With that.
But, but, but there again, it says a hundred foot, he exceeds that at one sixty-seven, I believe.
One sixty-eight, so a little close.
So anyway, he meets the requirements for waiver, but it still requires that the planning commission and city council approve that waiver.
But it's because he built the house.
It's because he built a house, yeah, in fact, this was, this hit my desk a couple of weeks ago, I don't remember if it was Monday or last week, but it hit my desk. And I asked Troy, I said, what the heck is this? Cause I didn't even know they built a house in.
Well, it's, it's hidden, it couldn't goes in.
I didn't even know.
Which actually, a lot of people wouldn't care for that. Unlike the privacy being off the street, I mean, I love that, and I mean, when I.
I remember when they split the lock, they split the lock a couple of years ago and almost sold it to another people.
If it was a problem.
You got a van booted area back there.
So that it would be, like if it was a problem for someone on this panel. That it wasn't a dedicated driveway look, could you just do like the twenty foot apron and be done?
Well, now, I mean, we require the driveway to be paved, but, but some of the options, we do allow, we allow asphalt, of course, we allow concrete. But we will even allow them to do paving strips like they used to do in the, you know, forties and fifties, that's always an option as well, some people have done that recently. It saves a lot on concrete and it does maintain that old-style feel that you used to see in old neighborhoods too, so that'd be an option as well.
And what about the, he said the geotextile, kinda like they had in the gardens up at the U of A, where they do all the tailgating, you know, they had to.
It's a dust-free, I don't remember if it specifies it has to be concrete or asphalt, I don't remember. I know, I know the word dust-free.
It's got dust-free, but I thought it had, it was getting changed to hard.
I think it's either like concrete, asphalt, or paint, or paint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but again, if that was something you wanna do, we could grant, you know, you could grant. Waiver for that as part of this, I think.
It, it's not y'all's um responsibility, but I was kinda found out, I'm gonna have a major problem for probably four to five months physically. And so, we're done and then, and then I found out about the driveway, oh no. Um so, you know, I was hoping I could get this variant so we could get moved in, because without that, I'm gonna probably be a while.
Well, typically, I mean, if it was in a new subdivision, wherever driveway was concrete, then I think that would be a different issue than an old neighborhood where.
We're a majority in that neighborhood.
Where the majority of them probably are gravel driven.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I move we approve variance for the paved driveway requirements for residential construction at one twenty-seven South Border Street.
Take. I have a motion and a second to approve the variance for driveway at one twenty-seven South Border, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
So you have to, which is on November eighteen.
So do I go to that meeting or what else?
It's advised.
Wouldn't hurt, that way, I would, I would recommend it, because if they have questions, I'm looking to be able to answer them.
Okay.
Troy will try, sometimes he gets it wrong.
Um anyway, I appreciate you gentlemen, okay, and uh we look forward to being here, uh son lives here, of course, that's a drawing card, right? So we look forward to it, and I got to meet Colin the other day, he was so nice, he never said a word about him being on this, come over and rant and rave with him, he's like. And then Troy says, well, Colin's, he never said a word.
I don't.
Y'all have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. We are a yearn.